City Commission meeting of Tuesday, July 24, 2018. Let the record show that we're missing one Commissioner, Mr. Steiner. First item is the Order of Business. Mrs. Carlson, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Thank you, President Decker and members of the Commission. There is a change we would like to do. It would be under number five, Engineering. Like to add a letter B, like in boy, and put that as Ballard Urban Grant. And then C would be the Reports. And add another report. The second report would be Eighth Street Update.
What about B1? No, they're gonna make a new B. This will be C1 and 2, right?
Right. B is Ballard Urban Grant. There'll be A is the Land Sale, B is Ballard Urban Grant, C would be Reports, 1 would be Dickinson Hills, 2 would be Eighth Street.
Okay. Okay. Any other changes?
No, that'd be all the changes.
Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on the changes to the Order of Business? Now I look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the Order of Business, second. Any further discussion or questions? Not all in favor of the Order of Business, signified by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The Order of Business is approved. Next is Consent Agenda. Is there anything on the Consent Agenda that Commissioners want to discuss? I guess my only question is, I think we're missing the minutes on the Consent Agenda from last meeting. Okay. Okay. I was just wondering where they were. That's fine. Okay. Okay, no problem. So, any other questions on the Consent Agenda?
Move to approve the Consent Agenda.
We have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further questions on the Consent Agenda? Now, we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Consent Agenda is approved. Non-Timetable, we'll move on to that. We do have some timetable this evening. Now, it will start at 5:20. The non-Timetable, first item up is HR Coordinator Nomenek with the Job Description.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. I am here today to talk about the GIS Technician Position to be reclassified to a GIS Specialist Position. This position, the Commission did approve in the 2018 budget for promotional opportunity for this position in this department. The GIS Technician Position was originally created and scored out at 750 points. It fell into Class 4, Grade 6. After rewriting the job description and changing some of the responsibilities and duties, we did increase responsibilities and expectations of this position. It scored higher in the areas of Essential Duties, Leadership, and Experience, with a total score of 850 points. It now falls into Class 4, Grade 8. It will still be a non-exempt position, and we are looking for approval for this position to be reclassified from GIS Technician to a GIS Specialist. We do have just one person in this position.
Okay. And this was, as you mentioned, something we had budgeted for?
Correct.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Nomenek? Now, I'd look for a motion on the Job Description, Reclassification.
Mr. President, I would move to approve the job reclassification from GIS Tech to GIS Specialist. Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the Job Reclassification with a second. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion is passed.
Thank you.
Uh, next item up. I have something different on the memo here. I have, on the memo, it says Public Safety Tax, but on the agenda here, we have Medical Marijuana. Is that just a misprint on the memo?
I'm saying Medical Marijuana.
Okay. So, we're on the Medical Marijuana, and City Attorney Murtha will be handling that.
Yes. Mr. President, Members of the Commission, this is the second reading of the Medical Marijuana Ordinance with regards to licensing dispensaries and manufacturing facilities that may be approved by the Department of, North Dakota Department of Health for the Medical Marijuana Program. So, this is not, and again, just a brief recap, this does not independently grant the City of Dickinson the ability to grant such licenses, who, those licenses will be determined by the Department of Health. This just provides for the zoning, should any of those applicants, successful applicants wish to locate within the City of Dickinson or the ETZ. There have been a few changes since the last reading. The first reading also was the public hearing. You'll notice that Items B, under both 3A, let's see here, 3A2 and 3B2 were removed. That related to a licensed childcare center or licensed preschool being considered within the definition of a school. Again, that, they are not technically being viewed by, as a school by the Department of Health, and should they have been included in the definition, the areas that would have permitted the location of these facilities would have been substantially reduced. There also was a change to the time under Subdivision 5, that dispensaries shall cease operations between the hours of 1:00 a.m. and 7:00 a.m., and I believe that was reflective of the Commission's comments, which indicated that it should parallel closings for bars and the like. And so, that was the reason those, that time was changed. However, if you would still like to make modifications to that time, that can certainly be done now as well. There was a slight spelling error that was also corrected. These changes from the last version are highlighted in red. There have been no other changes. I will let you know that in between the first reading and second reading today, myself and Mr. Hadley, the City Planner, did have an opportunity to meet with Dr. Mittel, President of DSU, to discuss issues that were particular to the DSU property, because, again, referencing back to our comments during the last meeting on this, the DSU property itself is not subdivided. It's on a very large parcel of land, and we were inquiring as to whether or not DSU would be able to define its campus or its Centers of Learning, differentiating it from just open ground upon which there is no building and is no learning, for being able to determine the appropriate setback requirements. DSU, Dr. Mittel indicated he was amenable. He didn't have the authority to be able to say that. He has to take it to his Oversight Board, and a similar conversation is being had with NDSU. But, in reviewing the ordinance, we felt that it would not be necessary to, even if they were going to do that, to make any changes to the language of the ordinance. That would just be in the application of the ordinance itself. So, we're hopeful, moving forward, that we'll be able to further define what constitutes the campus, but, again, no changes were necessary for the language. I would be happy to answer any questions the Commission may have.
Any questions on the Medical Marijuana Ordinance?
I guess the only question I have on the hours is, is it 1:00 a.m. to 8:00 a.m. with bars? Or is it 7:00? I thought it was 8:00 a.m.
Oh, my apologies. It was the, I think we were looking at it from the bar close, whereas the business open. So, if you would like it to be, the business can open at 7:00, but if you would like it to mirror the open time as well.
I don't think, oh, I was gonna say, 'cause I don't think the bar can open at 8:00, if I remember right. I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, I'm, we, I'm sorry. The interpretation was that it should mirror bar close. We, I wasn't thinking of it in terms of the open hours, but that, that change can be made.
I've, I don't have an issue with that.
I don't have an issue either. I was just, that was my only question, but it's fine.
Any other questions for Mrs. Murtha on the Medical Marijuana Ordinance? Hearing no questions. I know we've had one public hearing, but I will open it up again, just in case there is somebody from the public that would like to say anything about the Medical Marijuana Ordinance. If you have any comments on the Medical Marijuana Ordinance, please come forward, state your Seeing no one from the public, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any questions for the comments before we have a motion on 1657? Now, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I would move we approve the second reading of Ordinance Number 1657 regarding Medical Marijuana.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion is passed. We'll move on to Liquor License Revision. This one is for the Elks, the Dickinson Lodge 1137. Deputy City Administrator Carlson, you'll be handling this.
Yes, thank you, President, and Members of the Commission. This liquor license revision request is for the Elks Lodge 1137. They applied for a revision of their liquor license to extend service to an outside patio area. The background checks were completed on officers of the lodge. They're included in your packet. The appropriate fees were paid, and they are in compliance with the ordinance, and upon that, the Commission, they're asking the Commission for approval of their request.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Carlson? I think everything we requested last meeting has been taken care of.
Yes.
Yeah, looks good. The application's more complete.
So, if there are no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion on the Liquor License Revision.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion to approve the Liquor License Revision for the Elks 1137.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the Elks Revision on their liquor license with a second. Any further comments or questions for staff? Now, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion is passed. And we have another Liquor License Revision, JD's Barbecue.
Thank you. This is also the same type of a request. It is, they're applying for a revision of their liquor license to the extended service for an outside patio area. They have one, and they're extending it onto the north side. Background checks were completed, appropriate fees were paid, and they are in compliance, and they're asking the Commission for an approval of their extended service area.
All right, any questions for Mrs. Carlson on the Revision of JD's Liquor License?
Mr. President, I would move to approve the Liquor License Revision for JD's Barbecue.
We have a motion to approve the Revision?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion is passed. We'll move on to, we have Mrs. Nomenek back up here for Hiring Journal.
Mr. President, Commissioners, on the Hiring Journal, the first position is Police Officer. We do have one opening currently, and we are in the background phase for that position. We had an internal Sergeant position with the Police Department, and that was filled internally. We had a position for Information Intelligence Analyst. We did fill that position, and that person is currently working for us. Corporal position was opened up due to the Sergeant position, so that is in the interview process. We had an Animal Control Officer after redoing the job description. We did open the position up, had interviews, and we have made a hire on that. That person is, is working. We have one opening in the Street Department for, actually, yeah, one opening for a Street Maintenance Operator. We will be doing interviews for that tomorrow. We have an opening for a Water Utility Operator. Actually, I think there's two openings now, and those positions are being, those interviews are being scheduled. There are a couple openings for Limited Hour Library Assistant. We did just make one hire, but we just got a resignation from another person, so we have a couple Limited Hour Library Assistant openings that will be attempting to fill. Chief Engineering Technician, that was an internal opening, a promotional opportunity for 2018, and we did get an accepted offer on that, so that has been filled internally. Scale Service Representative, we had that open internally only, and that has been filled within the city. That then opened up a Solid Waste Route Operator Position, and those interviews will be, are being scheduled as we speak as well. And we have a Museum Visitor Service Attendant Position, that is a part-time position for us, and that we are in the interview process for. Any questions on any of our openings?
Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a, Mrs. Carlson, are you handling the group picture?
I believe, Shelley, Shelley, did you want to talk about the group picture? Or would you like me to? Okay. The group picture has been rescheduled for August 7th at 4:00 p.m. That's just before the Commission meeting, so August 7th, we'll have new pictures for everybody.
And you'll let Mr. Steiner know?
Yes. We'll be sending it out, yes.
All right. We'll move on to Public Safety, and Chief Dossinger has a few reports for us.
Good evening, Mr. President and the Members of the Commission. I want to take a few minutes to report on three events that we have coming up in our community that are Public Safety-related. The first one's gonna be the Citizens Police Academy that we will be hosting. There we go. Citizens Police Academy, we haven't hosted for about two years, and we're excited this year. We've got several new events and topics that we're gonna be presenting. It's gonna be running from October 3rd through October 19th on Wednesday evenings from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Some of the topics that are gonna be discussed, just gonna start out with a tour of the Public Safety Center. We're gonna talk about patrol procedures, field operations, DUI investigations, constitutional law, city ordinances, state law, traffic law. We'll be teaching some students how to do crash investigations, accident investigations, use of force, defensive tactics, firearms training, shoot, don't shoot scenarios, SWAT and crisis negotiations presentation done by our Special Operations Team. There'll also be a K-9 unit demonstration with both our single-purpose and our dual-purpose hog. We'll also have presentations done on narcotic investigations done by our Drug Task Force members. There'll also be a section dealing with the Communications and Emergency 911 topics. There'll also be some mock crime scenes that students will be allowed to learn how to process and investigate crime scenes. Domestic violence, crisis intervention, and also, there's a portion of it would be a, is a ride-along program, where they actually get to ride along with their officers. Another portion of that is, each student's gonna get one hour allowed to try our simulator, virtual simulator. And that's gonna deal with some basic marksmanship, where they can actually utilize and shoot some clay targets, steel targets on that. And Deputy Administrator Linda Carlson had an opportunity to do that a couple weeks ago. There'll be some situational scenarios stimulating split-second decisions that have to be made by, by law enforcement officers. If you're interested in signing up, anybody in the public or the Commission, get ahold of Lieutenant Mike Cannell at 456-7756, or you can log on to our website at www.dickinsonpd.com, and you can download the application and submit it for that.
Chief, I might have missed it. What are the hours on Wednesday nights it's gonna be running?
They'll be running from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m.
7:00 to 9:00, okay. And then, if, if somebody wants to do this and say they're gonna miss one week, are they still able, or they have to make every class?
No, that, that is fine. We like to see them, you know, attend the majority of the classes. We are capping the class at 25 students, just so we can do a good thorough job and involve everybody with the different scenarios and activities.
Chief Dossinger, is there a minimum age requirement?
It is 18, and all the applicants will be screened. There'll be a background investigation done on them, to make sure that they're not a convicted felon or anybody that should be prohibited from holding a firearm.
And do they have to have any certain level of fitness? I mean, because, I mean, there's some physical activity, I would assume, with a, with some of these classes.
There is, but we are not, you know, letting it to any type of, or fitness level.
All right, well, thank you.
The other event we got coming up is National Night Out. National Night Out, which will be held on August 7th at the Badlands Activity Center from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. We have a variety of vendors that are coming, from the ambulance crew, there'll be a Valley Med Flight helicopter coming in there as well. There'll be a demonstration done by our Fire Department for the Drawn of Life Extraction. There'll be a K-9 Bite and Narcotics Demonstration done by our, done by our K-9 units. North Dakota Game and Fish is also gonna participate, and there'll be a BB gun marksmanship, marksmanship course set up for, for younger kids that would like to do that, or a Commissioner wants to shoot a BB gun, that'll be there. There'll also be the North Dakota Highway, which will be there as well, with the Car Crash Simulator and Ride and the Convincer. There'll be a bounce house for the kids, photo booth opportunities. So, there's a variety of events that are gonna take place that night, and we're looking forward to it. We've got some really nice sponsors and a variety of the businesses in town to make this, make this possible for us.
Any food vendors on site?
There'll be some food vendors on site, and we, there'll also be some slush cones available for the kids there as well, if we have time. At that same time, the first night, as the Battle of the Badges actually gets kicked off, the first night of, as well, on that Tuesday, August 7th. So, we're looking to time those two events in together. It should be very, very busy on Tuesday night. The Dixon Battle of the Badges between police and fire have occurred for several years, and we're excited. I heard, had heard rumors that there might be a Limpsey Battle this year between police and fire at that same time, so, so we'll see how that evening goes. But we encourage everybody to come out and participate in the blood drive, and especially that August 7th, which should be a fun night at the PRC. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Chief Dossinger?
Might need to reschedule our Commission meeting.
Yeah, we might.
I don't wanna miss that Limpsey Battle.
If, if I'm correct, I think I, not to give anything away, but I think I'm a judge, and I don't think it's that night. I think the, is the Limpsey, you might wanna?
I'll double check.
I think it's the 8th.
You think it's next night? Okay.
Yeah, so.
I'll encourage you to come out.
I was asked to be a judge. That's the only reason I know, so.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Engineering, and Mr. Kubis is getting the pointer here, so.
Thank you, President Decker, Commissioners. The first item I have is something we've looked at for a little while. Can you see that a little bit better? This is on between 4th and 3rd Avenue East, north of 14th Street and the Yon Edition. Again, we talked about this at the last meeting. The City owns both of these parcels in yellow and in red. The parcel that's outlined in green had expressed some interest in this, initially just in the red parcel. Upon investigating, we found that we own both these. It's a 60-foot by 120-foot approximately, 60 by 120-foot lot. And so, we had a few options. The Commission had directed us to investigate further what a good minimum bid price for this lot would be if you so choose to sell the property or to advertise it for bids. So, we did some of that investigation with our Assessing Department, and some of these recent sales in the Dickinson area have ranged from $25,000. These were the last remaining lots in the Sundance Coves subdivision, to $55,000 in Cook's 5th Edition and in the Westridge Edition. These are all single-family lots. So, if it is the wishes of the Commission to sell, we would recommend a minimum bid of $35,000, but that minimum bid could certainly be at your discretion, so.
And that would be the minimum? So, basically, it'll be closed bids, or are we gonna actually, are you gonna?
The, the process we went through last time is we set the minimum bid, and then it's closed bids. They're, they're open and read aloud, the highest bid would take the property if the Commission would so choose to sell it.
I think that minimum's fine. I think there's gonna be higher bids than that.
And none of the sidewalks there are, have been completed, I saw from that one photo, right?
Correct, yeah. That property has, has no sidewalk on what would be its frontage on 4th Avenue East would be addressed up.
Do we know, is there services in there, Craig?
There's services in 4th Avenue East, in the street, not into the lot.
Not into the lot, so you'd have to go into the street to get the services.
They'd have to go into the street to get services. And you can see there's some patches on some of these other lots as well.
So, the comps you were referring to would have had the services already in the lot, so that makes a difference to you.
They would have, and of course, the bidders will have to factor that into their price. There'll be hookup fees, and then the price to dig out into the streets.
Commissioners, are we fine with the $35,000 minimum?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
Yes, all right. So, you're looking for consideration, a motion to approve the sale? Or put it up for sale?
Correct, and then we'll, we'll start the process, advertise it.
Okay. So, I would look for a motion, unless there's any other questions for Mr. Kubis or comments, I would look for a motion on approving or disapproving the $35,000 minimum and putting it up for bid.
Mr. President, I'd make a motion that we put this parcel up for bid with a minimum starting price of $35,000.
Okay.
Second.
All right. We, in the memo here, we do have a motion. Should we use the formal motion here, just to make sure, or?
I'll leave that up to you.
Why don't we use that motion?
It puts the legal.
If you would want to rescind your original motion, then we'll use, use the formal one. Is that fine?
Sure.
Okay, all right.
I move to sell through public bid.
I guess those do not sell online.
I move to sell through public bids with a minimum of $35,000. The property described as the south 30.27 feet of Lot 10 and the north 29.73 feet of Lot 11, Block 1, replot of Yon Edition.
All right, we have a motion to sell this property for a minimum bid of $35,000?
Mr. President, I would second.
All right. Any further questions, comments for Mr. Kubis? Now, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion is approved. We have a Item B here, Urban Grant, Ballard Urban Grant.
Yes, President Decker, Commissioners. We were, we just received word on this, so we didn't have it on the agenda, but Brendan from the Dickinson Press informed me that the DOT had made a press release on this, so we thought we might as well let the cat out of the bag. But we did receive word recently from the DOT that the grant that we had applied for back in February was approved. We had applied for a $2 million grant. It wasn't quite approved at that level, but I'll read the funding paragraph out of the letter. I'm sorry, don't have it in your packet, but that the construction and engineering cost of the project will be funded with 80.93% federal funds up to a maximum of 1.641703 for eligible items, and then state funds will also be used. They'll be available for eligible items at a project match of 9.07% for a maximum amount of $183,989. So, roughly $1.8 million in grant money that the City will need to match with only 10% local dollars. Again, this, this has been scaled back from the amount that was requested, though, so we anticipated this project to have a total cost of $2.5 million. So, the grants are in, they're 80% up to a max, or 10% on the state level up to a max. So, roughly, we're anticipating $700,000 of local match with the, with the grant dollars at $1.8 million. They're asking for with the grant dollars at one-point-eight million. They're asking for notification, whether we would like to accept these funds by August fifteenth, so we would ask for an action item from the commission to accept or not accept the grant dollars.
That would be at the next commission meeting, then?
We can do it tonight, or we can wait. You know, it's something we have budgeted in our CIP for 2020. We had asked the DOT, when do we have to use these dollars by, and they say, we just have to bid the project in 2019. So that still fits into our CIP scenario of constructing in 2020, bidding it late in 2019.
And Mrs. Murtha, we'd be fine approving something tonight, accepting the grant tonight? Okay. I didn't know if we had, you know, notice, because of the amount of city funds. So, from your explanation, though, is we're going to complete the whole project regardless of the two-point-five million project, so it'll, they'll do their one-point-eight, and we'll do the remaining seven-hundred thousand.
That would be my hopes for the project. I guess to back up, maybe Commissioner Walla wasn't involved when we put the grant application together, but the project in its entirety would go from State Avenue, and it would remove the old poles, put up new streetlights from State Avenue to Tenth Avenue East, and as we'd get closer to the downtown area, we'd use probably smaller, more decorative-style poles that we've been putting up in the downtown area, and then would also replace the traffic signals on Highway Twenty-two at, highway, or, excuse me, on Villard, at Highway Twenty-two and Sims, to the new style we've been using with the black, the matte-black finish on it. So I think it's really going to be a fantastic project. If we had to, we could ask the DOT to shorten the project up, but it would sure be nice to just get this done, and I think it'd be a great entrance into the community and into the downtown.
That'll really spruce up that...
Those poles have been up here for a while, so the streetlights and the signals.
Any more questions from Mr. Kubis? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve accepting the grant money, or disapprove.
I'd make a motion to accept the grant for the project. I think it's going to be a wonderful project, so...
My second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the grant and provide with matching funds for the DOT project on Villard, with a second. Any further questions or comments? Now, we'll vote. Ms. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. We have one more report, and that would be, oh, I actually have two reports. So we have Dickinson Hills Cost Estimate, and some information has been provided ahead of time for commissioners on this project.
It has been. It wasn't in your packet. We've worked on the project, so through discussion with the Dickinson Hills group, they've asked for the city to participate in funding of certain pieces of their project in that subdivision. And what we've been asked to put together is, what would the city participation level be if we just constructed Fairway Street? And so that was what was provided to the commission, and roughly, there's some contingency in there, roughly a million dollars to construct that fifteen-hundred feet or so of a fairway street that goes all the way through the Dickinson Hills subdivision. Again, that includes some contingency dollars. It does not include utilities. It includes streetlights, sidewalk on one side of the street, and with the asphalt-paved section, similar to, similar in width to the Fifteenth Street project that was built between the Roar subdivision and Pinecrest, but on this street, I estimated with asphalt. I think that would be a sufficient section there. So I think it's worth noting that there are some other projects. This isn't in any of our CIP that we've discussed over our last several budgeting meetings. This would be an addition to that CIP. And there's also other projects that we didn't have in the CIP that we had discussed, such as making some improvements to Westridge Drive, things like that. So there's some shuffling around if this were a project that we'd want to undertake, so... With that, I guess I'd open it up to any questions that the commission might have on the cost estimate itself.
Have we had any additional discussions with the Raden Group?
We have had them to schedule a meeting, which they have quite a few people on their end, and I think we have a meeting scheduled with them next week?
This week?
This Thursday.
This Thursday.
Okay. But, you know, as far as any detailed discussion, no.
Okay. I think we talked about some of the stuff, you know, possible use of some of those special, whatever, not special...
Development impact fees.
Impact fee funds, maybe we can do a portion of it out of there. I mean, so there's, you know, some options I guess we can look at, but...
Mr. President, I think this could potentially be a wonderful project to this community. However, I am very hesitant in investing into our participating and paying costs for their project. I think we are setting ourselves up for a difficult precedent if we open this door, and I think we would have quite a few people, A, wondering why we do it for this project and not for others, and B, continuing to ask similar requests. Personally, I am not in support of helping fund it.
Ms. Walla, any thoughts?
And this, just for clarification, this is Fairway, not the whole business loop?
It would be Fairway, west of the business. So Fairway dead ends right now at the west business. It would be in the extension kind of to this westerly, to the edge of what is now the city limits. It's about fifteen-hundred feet.
And this would only be sidewalk on one side, asphalt paving?
Yeah, you know, I made some assumptions. A lot of those things could be up for discussion, but I think it gets you a pretty good ballpark estimate of where the construction costs would be for the street. Again, no utilities, no water and sewer. We didn't include any of that. This is street construction.
And none of that's in there, right, Craig?
No, nope. They would have to, water and sewer are both along the business loop, but they'd have to tie into both of those.
And bring it in.
Yep.
I mean, for me, I'm sorry, if you had something...
No, I...
I mean, this level of investment, for me, is something that I would take a look at closer. I mean, the original request was nine million dollars, I think, you know? I don't think that was in the ballpark. I mean, I don't think we can approve something like that, but to put a main road in that, you know, is going to be our road forever, I mean, I think that's something that I would entertain and listen to both sides on it before, you know, making a decision to go either way, but the nine million just doesn't, we couldn't do that. I mean, we knew that from the beginning, but a million dollars to get that project off the ground, if we had some ways we could special it back, or, you know, there's some other financing options, I think, you know, it's something I would take a look at, so...
I think the only way that I would consider it, if they were agreeable, if we would special it, and that would be the only way, so...
And I concur with that. I wouldn't have an issue.
Yeah, we, people are wanting us to, as a city, and it is difficult, they want us to bring retail in, but we, as a city, that's not really our job. I mean, our job is to provide services, police and fire and streets, you know, maintenance that are, once they're constructed, but to actually get projects up and running, I mean, that's why we have development agreements, and that's why the developers come in and do these kind of projects. But if we could, you know, assist to get it going, but we can special it against that property, I'd probably be in support of it. I like this number a lot better than nine million.
Yeah, me, too.
So, but I don't, you know, in the grand scheme of their plan, I mean, their plan is pretty, it's drastically different than what we have right here. I think that is, their original plan was cement roadways and the gutters with roundabouts, and so...
And they need, in addition to what we have in this cost estimate, again, they have to bring all the water and sewer in.
Right.
Build out their site with parking lots and landscaping and the buildings themselves, so, and some drainage issues that we've talked about in the past, that a box culvert needs to be, you know, completed at some point. None of that's in the estimate, road only.
And that is one thing I was going to say, too, that that discussion about that find, that currently, that has to be resolved first, before we even process anything else, so...
Mr. Kubis, as a, from the perspective of a city engineer, what are your thoughts on potentially supporting them with this?
Well, from the city engineering standpoint, I think the road at some point will be a necessity. We would certainly have it in our plan. I mean, Fairway Street is going to be our street between the interstate and Highway Ten. That's certainly, so the need for it, the timing of it might be differently, but the need for it is certainly, you know, in support of. As far as paying for the road, or financing, I'll call it, I don't think we're proposing paying for it here. What I'm hearing is financing with a payback mechanism. We have done that. We had, you know, we have, we have a lot of precedents, you know? There was, because there was different economic conditions, you know, through the last, I'll say, ten years, maybe more. We did have a program in place in the mid-two thousands where we would take a project, maybe not quite this big, and we would finance a portion of it and have the developer or the properties pay the city back. Some of that payback is still happening. Now, we haven't financed those types of projects in quite a while. And then, you know, when times were very busy and we were getting a lot of dollars from the state, we had built some, you know, collector-type arterial roads, but that was to support what I'll call critical infrastructure. We helped build roads around the hospital, out to a middle school, things that, you know, were critical infrastructure, not city infrastructure, but critical to the community. So every one of these is a little bit different, so it's hard to say exactly if the city should step into this. Right now, I think it's a pretty fair approach that you're discussing right now, is saying, you know, first of all, do we need this project? That's the question you're asking, I think, and if we do need it, at what level would we fund it? And certainly, this is only a portion of what they're asking for, a small portion, so...
And in their original request, there, I don't believe they were asking us to help finance.
No, they were asking...
They wanted us to cover the...
Yeah, they wanted us to cover it.
But to be repaid with TIF funds, which we've, you know, which doesn't work in North Dakota, we found out, you know...
Because they had sales tax built into their TIF model, and we can't use the sales tax.
We can only use property tax, so...
And I think if we had really looked into it, I think that property was zoned agricultural less than eight years ago, and that's one of the first paragraphs in a TIF, if I'm correct. If it's been zoned agriculture in the last eight years, then it wouldn't qualify anyway, so...
There's a, there's a slight, Mr. President, there's a slight deviation where if you were going to identify it as a blighted zone, you could not do that if it had been zoned agricultural. There had, the North Dakota model of TIF sort of added on through, for various reasons, as the legislation developed and projects developed, that if you were going to identify it as a development, then that agricultural requirement doesn't necessarily flow through. So it all depends on how you, it would apply to it if you were going to say it's an area of redevelopment.
Mr. Kubis, in the past, we've done some urban road projects into developments, too, that we've not charged the developer. But, I mean, Eighteenth comes to mind in my head, Eighteenth Avenue East, I think, Craig?
Eighteenth Avenue East, at that time, the city built that urban road project, you know, with DOT funding at eighty percent and no special assessments.
Right.
You know, when we had forty-four million dollars given to the city by the state to build that infrastructure, we certainly built some roads with no specials, again, to access more of that, what I'd call that, critical infrastructure. We did do some special assessments on some other roads similar to this. Fortieth Street had the water and sewer assessed. Here, we're talking maybe a street, so it's certainly within the realm of what we've done in the past, but we've also required a lot of people to build their infrastructure with no city financing, no city funds at all.
For me, if, you know, if we're going to look at a special assessment program again, I mean, these are the kind of projects, these main roads are maybe the roads that make the most sense. I mean, other than interior roads into development or something, I would rather see us do a collector and assess an area with a collector than a bunch of interior roads and assess a bunch of, you know, individual lots, you know? That's my thoughts on it. So, I mean, I think it'd be a good project for that, or something like that.
Yeah, this, you know, Fairway Street, just in this particular place, happens to be that arterial road that's interior to a subdivision, where a lot of times, that interior road, or that arterial road is on a quarter line or a section line, and it just ends up being on a property line, too, where you have two different developers on, or non-developers on the other side of the property. So this one kind of is unique in the fact that Fairway isn't running right on a property line. It's interior to the development, but also an arterial road.
Well, and I, I'm not going to speak for Ms. Trustam or Ms. Walla, but, I mean, the general feeling, I, between Jason and I, is if they would be amicable to specialing this, I don't know if you guys feel that would be something we could talk to them about on Thursday with the meeting, if they would accept, you know, limited funding through specials.
Absolutely. My understanding was that they were still looking for the city to fund the project.
I think they are.
So I'm, I'm much more supportive of bringing a finance option to the table, coming, meeting them halfway, but still not holding the full responsibility for the, and we would acquire the land if the specials were not used at that point. But we have some protections there.
Right.
I mean, to their, I mean, they were, they did bring us a finance option. They were just looking at it in a different way. I mean, it was TIF repayment instead of assessment repayment, correct?
Or, well, they kind of asked for us to bond it, you know, bond the whole project. But I think, you know, if we put this option out there as a special, you know...
At one million dollars versus nine.
Yeah, oh, I agree.
Yeah, yeah, opposed to, we can't do nothing, so... We want to support the retail market in the city and develop it all we can, but we're not going to dig ourselves in further hole for it, so... Okay, I think we're, we, I think we have some guidance for Thursday.
Yes, I think so.
And you have one more report, Mr. Kubis, Eighth Street?
I do, and I think I can get through it before about five-twenty here. It's fairly short. So on our Eighth Street project on the south side of town, mainly on the east side of Highway Twenty-two, we've encountered some soils that we didn't anticipate. We did a Geotech report. The Geotech report obviously didn't touch every inch of that pavement or that roadway. The Geotech report came back saying we'd have pretty good soils to build a street on. What we've encountered in spots certainly isn't, isn't what we thought we would encounter through that Geotech report. So right now, we're having Highlands Engineering negotiate a change order with Northern Improvement, and it's to add more GeoGrid, and I didn't put it on here, but also to do some subcut areas where the DOT and myself and Highlands have a contract, we've met out on site, and we said, you know, we can't pave on this subgrade right now. So that project needs this change order to move forward, and the estimated cost of it for the entire roadway would be forty-five thousand dollars. Federal Highway, I say, is participating, we've gotten that indication, the DOT's talked to Federal Highway, that they'll participate at eighty percent, so the city share would be approximately nine thousand dollars. I guess what I'm asking today is if the... I guess what I'm asking today is if the commission would grant me the authority to approve this change order, because we really don't want to wait two more weeks before our next commission meeting, Northern Improvement. I think we're only a day or two away from having this change order signed and approved, or able to be signed. The amount, I think, is, is a fair amount. When we started out, we were much higher than this when we, when we encountered this last Thursday, so... A true open it up to questions, I know it's, it's a, a new item, but we really want to see this project keep moving forward. The longer it remains unpaved, we just open ourselves up to more opportunity for it to get wet again for more rains, so...
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Kubis on this project and the change order?
No.
I, I guess the, the only thing I would say is, are we putting in a process that, that possibly when we're doing the soil boring, that we're maybe going to start looking for? Because it seems that we, not always, but there's, we're running into certain patterns on certain old roads, that we're not getting, you know, the, the boring samples that we thought on a couple of these old roads.
Yeah. We'll certainly talk about that. I know Highlands Engineering and their, they didn't do the, the geotechnical work, it was subcontracted out, and I know they've had many, many conversations with the, the geotechnical subconsultant, and certainly, we're, we're going to require more, because not only did it not say that it would be bad soil, it said it would be fairly good soil to work on. And so, it's, it's tough going into a project, you know, there's always things that come up in a project, and this certainly wasn't one that was on our radar, because of the work we had done, and it's something we'll talk strongly with this, something something about.
And you can't bore every two, every five feet either, so, I mean, there's got to be a limit to it, so...
No, and, and this roadway did have what I'd consider odd pockets of, of heavy clays, you know. Most of the material was good, and then you ran into an area that's, you know, 100 feet long or 200 feet long, that was, it was bad, and it was very distinct where that, where that soil ended and began, and now we're having, having issues. It seemed to firm up when it dried out a little bit, and then with the construction traffic on there, it just, sometimes that happens. You get a crust built on it, and, and in, in really, literally, a matter of hours from Thursday morning to Thursday afternoon, it just, we lost our, our stability in the roadway, so...
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Kubis? Not, I'd look for a motion on his request to have the authority to sign the change order.
Mr. President, I would move to request, or I would move to approve City Engineer Craig Kubis' request for authority to sign the change order to this project on that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve his request.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? I will vote, Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion is passed. We'll move on to the airport, if I'm correct, right?
Public hearing.
Nope, oh, oh, public hearing. Okay, petition for vacation.
We have a, a quick one here, Mr. President and Commissioners. This is a petition to vacate utility easement. This is on north 10th Avenue West. If you're familiar with the area, just north a block or so is the Prairie Rose Elementary School. To the south of this property outlined in blue is the Subiaco Manor, if you're familiar. The, the person owns this property, they have a small shed built on it right now, and they're looking to build a home that would face to the west, face onto 11th Avenue West. And so, there's two large easements, not exactly sure why. Typically, our easements are 10 feet on each side of property land. This property had two roughly 20-foot easements. This north easement is the one that we're able to vacate. The south easement, if I can show you here, the south easement is down right here, and there's actually, it's, it's not a utility easement, it's a city water and sewer easement, which we have city water and sewer pipes in there. So, we talked with the applicant, we said, "We cannot vacate that easement to the south." The utility companies has all, had all signed off that they can vacate this easement, and, and that would, would be our intention. We have no issues with vacating that easement to the north. He was agreeable to that, he can still fit the home that he has planned on that property with the north easement vacated. So, I, I guess I would ask you, if, if you're in favor of this, to just approve Resolution 20-2018. The, the legal description is slightly different in, in the, in the resolution and correct, wherein in the memo that, that I had put together, I failed to leave out some areas, for what it's worth. We have easements on all four sides of this property, so we need to leave this 10-foot easement on the east and on the west. So, we're just vacating the north 20 feet less, the 10 feet on the east, and the 10 feet on the west, so...
And Rita, is that correct on the resolution? 2020?
Twenty twenty-two.
2022? Okay.
No.
Okay. So, 22-2018. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Kubis on the petition before I open up the public hearing? If there are no questions, I'll open up the public hearing. If anyone from the public has any concerns about this vacation, please come forward, state your name, and voice your concerns. No one from the public? I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any more questions for Mr. Kubis?
Looks like there's nothing in that easement.
No, all, all the utility companies have...
Signed off.
Signed off.
I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 22-18 for vacation easement for 2472 11th Avenue West.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve 22-2018. Any further comments or questions for Mr. Kubis? I will go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion is approved for 22-2018. We have about three minutes before the mobile home park license, and, Mr. Kubis, you are, you're finished, right?
I am. I was going to take off, if you don't mind, I have another meeting.
No, that's fine. If there's no more questions for Mr. Kubis on anything engineering? Okay, we have about two minutes, and we'll just jump up to public issues of city concern not on the agenda. Anyone have any public issues of city concern not on the agenda? Please come forward, state your name, and let us know your concerns. Seeing no one from the public with any issues, we'll close that part of the agenda, and still have two minutes.
I can easily do the GOS case updated.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Murtha.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the commission, with regards to this matter, which has been in litigation, the city recently found that it prevailed at summary judgment, so an order in our favor was entered, which means the case at the district level was dismissed. There is still the opportunity to appeal. Once that opportunity has run and there is no appeal, or if there is an appeal, I will report back to you and let you know, and once the matter is concluded, either because the time has run or because the case is done, I'll come back to you and we can have a better discussion about the details of it, looking back, issues that were great for the city and possibly ways to improve things going forward.
Mrs. Murtha, do you feel that there will be appeal?
I haven't any idea.
Okay, okay. Just, any other questions for Mrs. Murtha on this update? Not, we're at 5:30, and Mrs. Murtha, you'll be handling that.
Yes.
Mobile home park license.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the commission. This is the first reading and public hearing for, I believe it would be 1658, I can just confirm that, the mobile home park licensing ordinance. This was related to the issue which came before you many, many months ago, about the city taking over mobile home park licensing from the state. Currently, the state does that, however, if you, if you are able to provide a plan of licensure requirements that meets their approval, they will transfer that licensing authority to the city. The intent would be that if this is successfully moved forward to a second reading, that we would also have the memorandum of understanding with the state on the next agenda with the second reading at that time. At some highlights of this ordinance, it does specifically purp, the, excuse me, pertain to mobile home park licensing. It, it is shorter than it could be, and the reason for that is, the, a lot of the requirements for mobile home parks are located already in our Chapter 39. So, we really wanted to, the intent was, from the staff perspective, to really focus on the licensing issues that were present and not duplicate or impair any of the other items which were already in the zoning code with regards to mobile home park licensing. I will say that I met with, with our building official, I've also discussed some points of this with, with the fire department. This particular ordinance was modeled, just for your reference, off of the City of Fargo's mobile home park licensing, so many of the provisions are very similar to Fargo's. So, it does follow for that. The, some highlights of it, I won't go line by line, but some highlights of it, the term of the license would be from January 1st to December 31st, and the last sentence says, "Any license issued after January 1st of any year shall be valid only until the following December 31st." The license fee is not included in this ordinance because it is already on the fee schedule for the city, and the state did not charge any license fee for issuing a license to applicants within the City of Dickinson jurisdiction in anticipation of this happening during this year. In additional, I, I did want to highlight an area that is, that probably could use some additional commentary and guidance from yourselves, and that is, under park standards, which is the 21040050, Item C, "All streets shall be maintained in good condition." Actually, in City of Fargo's code, all streets are required to be paved, and pursuant to the fire code that would be applicable, in addition, all streets should be paved in the mobile home parks. However, our mobile home parks do not have paved streets, and I would defer to, to our fire chief to comment on why that is a very important feature, to have paved streets in mobile home parks. There is a concern with regards to the weight of the equipment, the ability to access homes in an emergency. If this is, however, in recognition of the fact that no streets are currently paved, the language was modified to just be maintained in good condition. However, if this is an area that the commission would like to pursue for future compliance, we can certainly add language that would require a schedule of compliance, so not immediate, but, because that would make it impossible for the parks to operate immediately, but a certain amount of feet per year, or something to that effect. So, that would be, that would be an area that we're specifically looking for guidance from you on about how to move forward with this issue. And I'd, I'd defer to Chief Seavakon.
Mayor Decker and Commissioners, just a slight correction, not all mobile home courts are, are without paved streets. There are some courts that need to complete paving streets, there are, is maybe a court that does not have paved streets. The fire code requires a hard surface street for access to anywhere that we're expected to go. It doesn't specify that it's pavement, but it does specify a hard surface street supporting a certain poundage. That's all related, that's all contained within the fire code. We have found historically through the buildout of Dickinson, especially during the boom, that a gravel road, irregardless of how well we've been told that would be built, does not stand up under the various weather conditions that we experience here, and is not an adequate replacement or an adequate option for a hard surface roadway. So, Fargo is, is very specific in calling out the pavement. The fire code addresses the hard surface and, and the weight that it must support. And again, there are some mobile home parks that comply, that have paved roads, there are some that are, some partially paved, and maybe we have one that doesn't have anything, so...
Thank you for the clear, the corrections.
Welcome.
And maybe this is a better question for engineering, or even Mr. Zurov or, or buildings, how, is there a process to test these gravel roads for a certain amount of load? Would, would they would, you know, meet a standard? Because there, we probably have garbage trucks running up and down these roads, I would think, on, on north court.
President Decker? Yes, that's one of the issues too, is, is the garbage trucks in, in some of these, I believe the south one, excuse me, we do have single containers that we, and sometimes we have to stop because the, I believe there were some pictures not too long ago of our, of our trucks that were stuck in, in the trailer port. Some of those, I think, Chief, if you can help me, I think some was partially paved, but then there's spots that, breaking apart, bad sections, that aren't kept up.
There, there is a mobile home park in town where the streets were paved at one time, they're in extremely poor condition, and it was an example of where they had tried to mitigate the problem with the gravel road. And yes, I literally buried your refuse truck.
Correct.
Examples in, in West Ridge, during the buildout of West Ridge, where we were trying to access apartment buildings, we were provided with gravelled roads that we were assured would address all the concerns of the code, and they failed. When we took the trucks out and we tested the road, they failed. So, that, I would say that it would be in the best interests of the City of Dickinson to look at some other type of hard surface other than looking at saying we're going to accept a gravel road. I would also say that some type of, of phase-in would have to be a part of it, because some of the parks just wouldn't be able to do this all at once, because they've been in this condition for a long time. So, it would have to be something that, that wouldn't be expected that's going to be done overnight, quite honestly.
Well, Mrs. Zurov, the, I, we probably, we, we all know which park you're talking about, which was paved at one time and now is falling apart and is basically gravel. Those are privately owned streets, am I correct?
They are, and that's what you, you have to remember, yes, they are private, private streets. Once you begin that trailer port, I believe even our, our water and sewer ends at that entrance to that trailer port. There are, you know, some options that we might have that the fire department doesn't. You know, we looked at some of these of having a, one large container at the entrance of the parking lot, that they have to bring the solid waste to, so we don't have to deal with that with our truck. Fire doesn't have that option.
Right.
But, yeah, they're private roads, private utilities beyond the entrance of the park.
I mean, I'm just thinking on how, how do we...
It's going to be awfully hard. I mean, where do we, and then are we going to make them put curb gutter?
I think it becomes an issue of backing the fire code. The, the fire code as adopted by the city becomes municipal law, I believe, and the fire code does not distinguish whether it's a private drive or a private road, it addresses our ability to access the area.
But I'm just thinking within the code, and, and you've stated it too, it, it just calls for hardened road. So, to me, it's, what do we consider load-bearing road to standard? And like you said, you've been provided with information in the past that, hey, this gravel road will stand up, and it doesn't.
Right. It does not, it calls for a hard surface road. In, in the code commentaries, you'll find comments or references to that generally, it's generally accepted that the gravel road is not an all-weather, all-surface, all-weather, all-condition road.
And President Decker, Commissioner, you are right, it's not a city road, so it, you know, we're not talking about city specifications.
Yes.
So, this to me would have to, you know, it's more approval by fire department and/or utilities on access. So, maybe there needs to be, you know, probably more discussion on exactly what that is, because we don't have a spec sheet that we can give the mobile home court. I guess I... I guess I would work with the chief and, you know, make that decision.
I mean, you take some of these parks for them to go pave them all, you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mean, and then what specification do we make? I mean, is it just a rural asphalt section? So, it's just like a rural, an asphalt cap on, you know, like you do in a rural road? Or is it a full city road?
You'd have to.
Well, there's some parks that there's no way.
They're made for drainage. I mean, you know, you can't put curb gutter, you know, so.
Commissioner, that's the question that we're hoping you'll help us answer. Other communities have addressed how they want their communities to look and grow and we do have a situation here where there are parks, it would take quite a while. It would take a piece at a time type of thing for them to do that. It's not something that some of them would be able to come forward and do all that once. We have to recognize that. But that direction of what that road should be and how it addresses and answers the requirements of the fire code is up for you to help us with.
Well, I'm just thinking of one park behind the floral shop. I don't even know how you would get in there to, I have no idea how you would get in there to even start work on that road, to cap it or?
That one, those roads are hard-surfaced in a state of disrepair, but they were paved at one time.
Right, as was the one on the south side of town too.
Right.
And it's falling apart.
But that's the missing piece is the communities look at how do we want to do this and what do we want it to be? Or do we want mobile home parks to continue to build out or to even start up new and not have the same standard or close standard to what a city street is now?
I mean, I could see if somebody wanted to put a new park in or they wanted to expand a park, we could require paving, but, I mean, you'd have to give them like a 10- or 15-year buildout on some of these big parks. I mean.
At least 10. But my biggest question is, is are we going to require then asphalt? I mean, that would be the minimum, would be an asphalt cap if that's what the fire code, but the fire code doesn't specifically say asphalt, just says hard surface.
Hard surface.
Hard surface.
And then there's a poundage recommendation that my failing memory can't bring to you. But that's one of the missing pieces that we've had to deal with over the years as the parks have grown, was we really, community-wise, we really did not have that pinned down and clarified. We knew what the code said, but there was missing pieces to that.
So, would that be similar to like a rural subdivision that has a gravel road? I mean, is, I mean, it's the same fire code, wouldn't it not be?
There is no, the fire code does not extend beyond city limits. It's corporate city limits only. There were no.
So, they have a different fire code in rural?
They don't, they don't have the fire code in rural. They have whatever the state fire marshal may bring to the table, but the county, in developing a mobile home park in the county, doesn't have the regulations that we're looking But that's why it's on the table. That's why there needs to be some constructive wordsmithing here to find the answer.
I do think we need to change that from just being well-maintained or in good condition because that's a pretty broad definition of maintain in good condition.
But I think it would be a conversation that Mr. Zuroff and the city engineer definitely need to weigh in on and find what's truly reasonable that still addresses how we've adopted the code.
It just, I'm trying to go through in my head all the different parks we have in town and we have some with curb and gutter. We have some that are just basically started as trails.
Yeah.
Is there some with? How much time do we have on this, Mrs. Murtha?
We have all year, actually.
Okay.
But what I would offer, if the Commission's amenable to it based on the discussion today, is to go back and explore some of the surface options that might be out there as well as provide some language of, an example of what that might look like if you're going to gradually allow them to come into compliance and bring that back for your consideration.
I do think it's something we need to address for the safety of the citizens that are living in these mobile home parks. And in the case of mobile homes, I think it's even a bigger challenge for the fire department to get there quickly and if they have to negotiate through bad roads because some of these, you know, these mobile homes, these trailer homes are probably have some age on them and they're not going to last long in a fire.
I mean, my other question is, I mean, if they don't come into compliance, are we going to go kick a couple hundred people out of Southview?
You don't issue a license.
I mean, that'd be basically us saying that they would have to kick them out.
On the roads that aren't within?
Well, down there, I don't think there's any that are in compliance.
I think that.
The road is a big part of the whole reason of why we wanted the licensing under the city banner, but it goes much further than that. It gives the building officials some more teeth, I guess, for lack of saying it better, in what they need to look at. This is a piece of it, this is a part of it. It needs to be somehow crafted and addressed, but.
I think, and Mr. Zuroff can probably, and you can attest, it's probably A and B street down there that are probably the worst.
Southview Avenue?
Yeah. Because the ones, and that's because those trailer houses were there when the park was empty, but those two streets were still there, so they were being used. They fell apart. Now, if you go south, further south, you go into that, the streets are in pretty good condition. I'm not going to say they're perfect, but they're in pretty good condition. You know, my biggest concern is like the one behind the floral shop is how do you even cap, you know, or go and refurbish it? I guess it was hard at one time. How do you refurbish it and still provide the drainage?
President Decker, you know, on that trailer court itself, I think that's kind of what spurred all this.
Right.
Is we've had, you know, a lot of issues there. In fact, that's one area that we refused to, you know, collect garbage because we couldn't get in there. The trees weren't trimmed and so we did move a central container. But that's one of the issues, I think, that we looked at with licensing through the Department of Health is it was in terrible shape. We couldn't get in there and there was no regulating, I guess, by the Department of Health. And, you know, some trailer courts, you know, and that one in particular, and I hate to say it, but, I mean, some might not meet or be able to get up to what we need in the city.
Well, that one is, it's a good example. That one, by fire code standards, there's only one way in or out of that. That should be limited to 30 dwelling units and no more, just like a residential subdivision that only has one access point. This is what having the city license will help us do.
I guess my feeling is if we could table this, because we have time, and then come back with a better definition or better direction on the language, especially for those roads.
I mean, if we go and say it's got to be paved, that's going to be a stricter than code. So, they're going to always have that argument, well, we meet fire code, but the city is going to be strict, we're going to be more.
I would argue that some courts right now do not meet fire. And it's subjective, admittedly, but I would argue that they don't.
And I, but I mean, it says a hard surface road, so they're going to come back, they're going to fight back with that argument because of the expense. I mean, you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars to pave those roads. I mean, it's not just, I mean, there's miles, there's miles of roads, especially in that one trailer court alone. And then what, how strict do we make it?
Well, we have one trailer court where the, some of the roads, some of the newest, latest roads, as they continue to expand, are nothing more than a couple loads of scoria.
Yeah, I see.
So, it somehow, whether we find that target tonight or not, somehow, there's got to be something more there for us.
Yeah, I agree. I'm more open to hearing the conversation, if somebody wants to build a new trailer court or expand an existing one, that we are stricter, but unless we have a really long buy-in period where they can do this over 10 or 12 years or something, you know.
The other thing I'd like to mention, I guess, is a case for addressing it, if we were looking at a new subdivision of residential homes and there was going to be 30 or 40 new homes in an area, 30 or 40 dwelling units, and that's how the code looks at it. It doesn't distinguish between a mobile home or a stick-built house. It's a dwelling unit where there are people that are living that we're bound to respond to. We wouldn't accept anything but our city standard road. And I'm not saying that that's how we default here, but I'm just open to the conversation of something other than.
But there again, we'd own that road, though.
We do have some areas where we don't.
Do we, like in, do we do snow removal in Heartland? No, we don't. We don't do any of that.
No, President Decker, any private roads, we do not do snow removal. There are multiple private roads and we've tried to assign them the last couple of years because some subdivisions, even in Sundance Cove, one, I can't remember the name of the road, but the one to the furthest to the east, they wanted to build narrower than city code and so that's a private road. So, we have private roads, you know, and most trailer courts are private roads. So, no, we don't.
We don't do any of them?
We don't do any of them.
So, that falls on them. Well, like I said, I think I would feel comfortable if we'd have a motion to table this and come back with some better language and some better information.
Yeah, I think Gary and the chief and Leonard and Craig, maybe all need to get together and come up with something, but.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Mr. Schwint, do you have anything to add? Nothing? Okay. Mr. Zuroff, anything more?
No.
Okay. Chief Dossinger, anything to add? I know you're concerned too with police, so, okay. So, I would look for a motion to table this item.
I'd make that motion.
Motion to table?
Aye.
With a second. Any further questions? All in favor of tabling ordinance 1658? Signified by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign? Motion to table is approved. We will now move on to the airport budget. Mr. Brown waiting back there patiently. I tried to bump you up, but they wouldn't let me, so.
Exciting conversations this afternoon. Mayor Decker, Commissioners, good afternoon. Kelly Brown, Airport Manager, Theodore Roosevelt Regional Airport. You've been provided the proposed budget for 2019 for approval. This budget was approved last week by the Airport Authority. Our proposed budget for 2019 is $1,054,499.41 with proposed or estimated expenses of $1,015,784 with a difference of $38,715. The 2019 budget is on par with the budget that we requested in 2018 and if anybody has any questions, we'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions, Commissioners, for Mr. Brown? The GA sale out there, that is still, that's not pending anymore, so, okay. And your boardings and in-flight's up, down? I haven't been able to make the last couple meetings, so.
I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but the employment numbers continue to increase. Percentage-wise, the Dickinson Airport has been ahead of the rest of the state. We're around 16% or so over the same period of time last year. We're just shy of 2,000 employments a month right now. I think we're running, you know, 1,900 and some change.
And I guess the one question I would ask is, because we're going through our budget talks also, are you, you know, we had that discussion about the matching local funds between the county and the city to help with, to meet the local match for the construction of the runway. Would those funds be adequate or are you going to ask for additional four mils?
Well, I think as it stands right now, the proposed amount would be adequate. So, there's a $3 million local participation for a number of projects over the next four years that kind of haven't broken out in different phases, but I believe that amount.
It's over four years if I'm remembering correctly, yeah.
Correct, yeah. But that amount is sperm.
Okay. I guess we're just trying to figure out our budget too and if you guys are going to ask for that additional four mils, but I think we'll, between us and the county, we'll be able to come up with those matching funds. Any other questions on this, on their budget? I think they're running a pretty good ship out there, so. Any additional, no additional personnel for next year, same?
We actually do have one additional employee for the 2019 budget. We're going to bring a maintenance slash operations personnel back on staff. That position has been open since 2016. We had it on the books, we just hadn't filled it since. Activity and demand on personnel is dictated that we bring that person or fill that position this coming year.
And no major improvements to the hangar anticipated?
Any major improvements that we have right now would be a capital outlay. The budget that you guys have in front of you right now is just for operating expenses.
Alrighty. Commissioners, any questions? Now, I'd look for a motion on, to approve or disapprove the budget for the airport.
Mr. President, I would move to approve the airport budget.
Motion to approve? With a second. Any further discussion or questions for Mr. Brown? Not a little vote, Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. We'll see you at the next meeting. Mr. Brown?
All right, looking forward to it. Thank you, everyone.
And then Commission, next item on here is we have some open meetings and records training to follow. Anything from Commissioners that they would like to talk about before we adjourn? Any items or, Mrs. Murtha?
Yes, just a quick, just a quick report on the open records and meetings training. So, to briefly recap, we had talked about doing this earlier in the year, but wanted to wait for a lighter agenda. This is a lighter agenda. I can promise you that absent any questions, it should only be about 30 minutes. It was crafted that way. I'll just note for everyone in the room that the reason why we can do this outside of the meeting is because in 2017, a change in the law was passed that accepted out trainings as being, as part of a meeting. So, you can actually have a training without noticing it and having a quorum of members attend. So, that was one of the changes that was made in 2017 under 4404, 17.19B4. If it's your preference, you can always have trainings during your meeting. You don't need to adjourn and then go. Just thought it would be convenient to comment that we were having it and, of course, anybody, member of the public can come in, sit, attend the training. One item that was asked of me, one question that was asked of me that I didn't have a good answer for was, "Do you want the training recorded?" I don't have a preference. It's completely up to you. So, I would just leave it and just say that once we adjourn and go into the training, anyone can stay. However, no public business can be discussed.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the, if there are Commissioners, if you have any item that you would like to discuss that was not on the agenda this evening? Nothing? Then I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Wait, do you want it recorded?
Oh, I would say yes.
Sure.
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
I guess, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Now, we'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Sub move.
We adjourn.